Joe was thinking about you today. Amy, how are you?
He almost watched us play. He looked so counterproductive.
What's up? Oh, there it is. Here's your father, Roxanne. What's up, Nathan? Uh huh. I'm on the line. Ted, what's up? There you go. You got it.
Got to start it. The time is now four oh three P M. On Wednesday, September tenth. I hereby call this special city council meeting to order. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Alamin?
Present.
Dr. Lewis is not in. Ms. Johnson? Ms. Priestley is not in. Ms. Winfrey Carter is not in. Ms. Burns?
Present.
Ms. Michelle?
Present.
Mr. Pfeiffer is not in. Mr. Jared is not in. You have four members present?
We have four members present. Um, Dr. Lewis just walked in. So, um, I don't know what you want to do. Do you want to wait one minute for Ms. Priestley? Or she's just going to have to get in when she gets in? It doesn't matter for me.
Um, I will... Uh, I will just state for the record that at four oh four with Ms. Lewis, um, you have a quorum.
All right, then, for the record, at four oh four is when the clerk said it. We now have a quorum. It is now time for the pledge of allegiance. Uh, Dr. Lewis, will you lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Um, before we get to the prayer of blessing, is there anyone who would like to recognize a family? Have a moment of silence for a family or a family member. Okay, seeing as how there is, um, there isn't anyone with a request for a family or a moment of silence for a, um, family, uh, we will go into the prayer of blessing. Councilwoman Priestley, will you please lead us in prayer?
And Leifla other, we ask for your blessing upon the city council meeting as we meet to go and do the, what's best for the residents of the city and its employees. Lord, we ask for your hand upon us as we deliberate and make decisions that affect so many lives. And Lord, we ask your hand on those who are grieving for people who have lost and lonely. In your precious name, amen.
It's now time for the reading of the disorderly persons city code subsection. Any person that persists in disrupting this meeting will be in violation of Flint City Code Section thirty-one dash ten, disorderly conduct, assault and battery, and disorderly persons, and will be subject to arrest for a misdemeanor. Any person who prevents the peaceful and orderly conduct of any meeting will be given one warning. If they persist in disrupting the meeting, the individual will be subject to arrest. Violators will be removed from the meetings. You are also subject to council rules. It's now time for public comment. Members of the public who wish to address the city council or its committees must register before the meeting begins. A box was placed at the entrance to the council chambers for a collection of registrations. No additional speakers or slips will be accepted after the meeting begins. Members of the public shall have no more than three minutes per speaker during public comment with only one speaking opportunity per speaker. First public speaker, Madam Clerk.
First speaker is Mari Copanik.
Before me sits a council that has so many members that lack the integrity, empathy, and accountability. The behaviors that some of you display, the behaviors that so many of you let slide, the behavior that so many of you think is acceptable is sad. Monday, everyone in this chamber watched as Leon and Liddell walked in these chambers side by side, grinning ear to ear. It's one thing to tolerate somebody because you work with them, but the way you walked in here with him like some bootleg Bonnie and Clyde is actually so crazy to me. And you should honestly be embarrassed. You can scream innocent until proven guilty all day, but we all know if it was one of your loved ones that was abused, you would be screaming and I'd cut his balls off. Also, elected officials shouldn't be out in the community following around residents and taunting them. Our leaders are supposed to hold themselves to a higher standards and not behave like rabid dogs. You'll go on a press conference and get on TV and preach about being positive, repeat it over and over again, about being Flint strong and moving Flint forward, while hopping group chats with pastors calling residents niggas and getting on social media and talk negatively on Facebook group pages. As elected officials, it is your job to be a voice for the people here. It is your job to show empathy to your, uh, whatever that word is. It is, it is your job to hold both yourselves and your coworkers accountable. Leon, you need to hold yourself accountable and step down until your case is finished in court. Prove to use that you hold some level of personal integrity. Everybody is constantly telling me to stay in a challenged place when they don't like what I have to say. But right here, we have adults, adults that are elected leaders that behave worse than out of control teenagers. And there is something extremely disturbing about that.
Thank you. Next public speaker, Madam Clerk.
Next speaker is Beverly Biggs Levy.
Hi, my name is Beverly Biggs Levy. I'm in the third ward. Leon, I'm really ashamed of you, sadly. Every time you put a PPO out on us, you put the address in Mount Morris Township. That's because you don't live in Flint. You guys gotta wake up. You know, like I said, Judy and Candace, if it was your daughter that got beat, like the woman that Leon beat, you wouldn't be looking up here trying to save him. And the reason why, because you don't have any kids. I have a daughter. I have a granddaughter. I have a great granddaughter. And if Leon would have beat one of my kids, it would be on and popping. You can call it what you want to say. You guys tolerate this abuse. You're a woman beater. You always have been a woman beater. It didn't just start. And reform, you're not reform. You're not. You guys need to wake up. But you, it's normal. You're, you're, you're five crooked people. And I'mma call it like I see it. First ward, second ward, fourth ward, seventh ward, and the third. And the third, I ain't gonna leave you out. Like I say, you wouldn't have had no problem when I brought them bras up here to Judy, because one of them came from your house. But you want to say I, uh, talked about your daughter's dad. I don't know your daughter's dad. I'm too old for that, but I'll call it like I see it. You can say what you want to say about me. I stand on business. I'm not backing down off none of y'all. But you guys gotta wake up. Your, your day is coming. You have a blessed day.
Thank you. Next public speaker, Madam Clerk.
The final speaker for this meeting is Arthur Woodson.
Good evening. Let me start off by saying, uh, you are innocent until proven guilty, but I'm laughing at you because you stood up here and laughed when Candace had no right to arrest me twice. But I'm not going to sit up here and speak about domestic violence. I'm going to speak about the residency. Ms. Donahue and cuffs, y'all have the authority to tell him to get off the council right now until the investigation is done with his residency. Some, somebody signed a lease. Somebody paid rent. And then there's an affidavit saying that he does not live at the address that he put on his affidavit. Why is he even up here voting when you have that proof? Everywhere in the state of Michigan where the people that went to jail or been kicked off city council, state rep, or whatever, they didn't even have that much proof. And every time you turn around, it's somebody protecting them. Your job is not worth all that, cuffs. I thought you was an honest man. But I see now that you'll go with the flow just to save your job. Candace, you made a statement when Mr. Dungy got up here, and I respect the years that he'd been with the water department. But you tried to make it sound like just because he was here for ninety, since nineteen ninety-seven, we should listen to him. I remember going down a road back in two thousand fourteen where there was a whole lot of people who had years behind them, but they poisoned us with the water. And you listened to them too? So don't come at us with that, oh, just because somebody worked in a position for so long, we should have to listen to them. Because there's people out here on the streets that have more intelligence than y'all do, really. Because y'all, y'all really don't, y'all, y'all really don't look at things. That three hundred thousand dollars for the, uh, for that grocery store? Let me hurry up and say this. Don't vote for it. It's nothing but Auto World Park two point oh. A money dump. Ten years, it should have been ten years for that store to open. And then they moved down to South Carolina to get a house and Corvettes and everything else. Just like the Tillmans that went down to Florida and got a big old nine hundred thousand dollar house. And the congregation don't even know that they got two hundred thousand dollars from the church. These pastors, something else. Robin is blind. Robin Peter and Paul, for real. Uh, Ms. Johnson, please, don't be a rubber stamp tonight. There's some things on here that's been out there for, for a while. And you look like the Supremes tonight.
Thank you. You said that was the last public speaker, correct, Madam Clerk?
That's correct.
Thank you. It is now time for council response. Council members may respond once to all public speakers only after all public speakers have spoken. An individual council member's response shall be limited to two minutes. Is there anyone who would like the floor during council response?
Uh, Madam Chair?
Councilwoman Burns?
Thank you to you through the city clerk. Um, Clerk Donahue, um, I gave you, uh, I did leave the meeting last before conferring with my attorney. Um, but I did give you in July the phone for Councilman Leon L. Alamin, which he claims I stole city property. Um, you had that phone two months before. And I also contacted the city attorney and the city secretary. So Mr. Alamin made yet another fraudulent, false, uh, statement. How long have you had that phone?
Um, it was in my possession since you turned it over to me in mid-July.
Okay, so, so thank you. So again, again, I wouldn't have had that phone if it were for not the two emails I received from Daquisha Martin, which was in an email, I didn't know who it was from, stating that domestic violence, you can find him on Copman Boulevard. I didn't know who those people were. Didn't know. Her and her mother called me back. And when she called me back, she told me she had been brutalized. And she told me she had been beaten. That's what happened. I told her before I helped her with services to move out of the county for domestic violence, that she needed to make sure she got that phone back to the city because it belongs to the city, not to Mr. L. Alamin. And she did that. And he knows that. So him not answering his calls is on him. So he needs to become familiar with the truth because he was not truthful at that time. That phone was used to make a desperate call to nine one one because she claimed she was strangled. And the Genesee County prosecutor charged him with a felony for murder less than murder, but with strangulation and a misdemeanor.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak during council response?
Just would like to say...
Councilman Alamin, you have the floor.
Thank you just for confirming who turned that phone in to you. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak during council response? Seeing as how there's no one else who wishes to speak during council response, it is now time for the consent agenda. What is the pleasure of the body?
Madam Chair?
Councilwoman in the second ward?
I move that we pass the consent agenda.
There is a motion to pass the consent agenda. Is there support? Moved and properly supported by the councilmen in the first ward. Are there separations?
Madam Chair?
Councilwoman in the fourth ward?
Two five zero, two nine zero.
Two five zero, two nine zero? All right, are there any more separations?
Madam Chair?
Councilwoman Burns?
Uh, complete separation.
Complete separations it is. We shall move on to resolution two five zero, two nine zero dash T, which is the reallocation of ARPA funds for the North Flint Food Market Cooperative. What is the pleasure of the body?
Madam Chair?
Councilwoman in the second ward?
I move that we pass this resolution.
There's been a motion to, uh, pass this resolution. Is there support? Moved and properly supported by the councilmen in the first ward. Is there discussion in the first round of discussion?
Madam Chair?
Councilwoman Priestley, you have the floor.
I just want to reiter- reiterate what I have said continuously, and that is that I will not support this resolution.
Is that all, Councilwoman Priestley? Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like the floor in the first round of discussion?
Madam Chair?
Councilwoman Burns, you have the floor.
Uh, you could, I see Dr. Flynn, you the Dr. Flynn.
Dr. Flynn, if you would please join us at the lectern.
Hi, Dr. Flynn, how are you?
I'm doing well. How are you, Councilwoman?
Good. We don't have a full council here today. And I did get a chance when you called me today to return the call. So I apologize for that. I think our last conversation was, I know the time you had access for six hundred thousand, then I think it was three hundred thousand. And I, I want to be full disclosure. I did meet and I was told, and you and I talked, that you would get the one point five million. So when I met and was told you would get the one point five million, I was like, okay, this is great. You know, we can use this, these funds for something else. So that was where I stood with that because I know you were trying to get first six hundred thousand, then three hundred thou- and I don't know if there was, it's been about three years we've been trying to get funds for that market. Um, but once I, I spoke with, um, and full disclosure, I spoke with Ridgeway personally. And I met with him personally. And I, he did state that, and I want people to know, he did tell me that he did a forensic audit. And all your paperwork and everything has been in order.
Yes.
He did tell me that.
Yes.
And so he said that, um, you had overcharges, you had, um, items that were, you didn't plan for. Well, you don't plan for people stealing things, which would require you to have security, um, and other things. And he did state that. Um, so I cannot support this at this time. If I knew that the market was struggling and it got started, then I, I would, but I can't at this time. Not when I know you're getting one point five. And he stated, if you are struggling in the first couple of months, there's going to be five hundred thousand set aside to help you alone. So...
May I?
Yeah, absolutely. Absolutely.
So the, the one point five million is a part of a larger preopening budget, which consists of two point five million. The funding that we're seeking through the city of Flint is the three hundred thousand that we hope that would give support to us for staff development and training. We're bringing close to forty jobs to the city of Flint.
I haven't looked at the packet. This meeting was called yesterday. Is that in our packet?
I don't, I don't know who distributes the packets.
Madam Clerk, when did we first receive this packet?
So can we stop my time? Because she, she's on my time. And get, if I give back ten seconds?
So Kristal, please hold off because I'm chairing. Go ahead, Madam Clerk, with the question that I asked. Kristal, no, you can pause her time. That's fine.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Madam Clerk.
Uh, uh, hold on, point of order.
What's your point?
My point of order is the chair cannot take time according to Robert's rules.
I did not take your time.
You're in the middle, in the chair.
Oh, right, so...
The chair cannot interrupt according to Robert's rules. I'm still on the point of order, please. And it is my time. So the chair cannot, according to Robert's rules, twelfth edition, take the floor. Now, when you have your time, then you can ask your questions.
That is an improper point of order. Go ahead, Madam Clerk.
No, it's not.
Uh, the chair rules on the point of order. The chair rules on the point of order. The chair rules on the point of order.
Point of order.
What is your point?
My...
What rule has been breached?
One, that you're taking the floor illegally.
What rule has been breached?
You're taking the floor illegally.
What rule has been breached?
I'm telling you, you should be able to comprehend it. Again, you're taking the floor illegally. And so your question with my time, which it went over, you took the floor, which you've become accustomed to.
If that sounds amazing to you, sounds amazing to me. Madam Clerk, would you please respond to my question?
This particular resolution was presented to council several months ago. And then it returned, um, within the last couple of weeks. It's the same resolution that was...
With the same packet information?
Correct.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Can we please put her time back to two forty?
So my point is, at that point, I had not talked to Ridgeway. So she made a mute point to want to hear herself and took the floor illegally. So I'm not talking, you're, you're, you're interrupting me. Warn yourself, please. Warn your, of course you won't, because it, no, you be quiet because this is my time. So Dr. Flynn...
Please pause her time. Please pause her time. I'm going to ask you that you be respectful of the chair. Do not ask me to please be quiet. Please, you need to make sure that you're respectful of the chair.
Point of order.
What is your point? What rule has been breached? What rule has been breached?
I'm asking you, you're, number one, you're interrupting me.
What rule has been breached?
I'm asking you to be respectful of my time.
All right. So let me explain something really quickly. The chair does not have the call point of order, does not have the call point of information. The chair can pause your time, take the floor, make a point and give it back to you. If you're going to quote the rules, quote them correctly. Thank you. I'm asking you, you do not have the floor. I have the floor.
Okay, well, let me know when you're done.
I sure will.
Since you are a master.
Absolutely, I will. I'll let you know. As I was stating, you need to be polite. Do not talk to colleagues in disrespectful manner. Do not sell someone to please be quiet. Ms. Burns, we are all adults. You need to respect us all as adults. You want respect, you will get respect, but you will not be disrespectful. Please start her time.
So my point is, and I'm sorry, you're putting this because we have an overzealous chair. You cannot interrupt. And I'm going to remain on that because it's Robert's rules. And I just happen to know the Robert's rules. You cannot interrupt nor take the floor frivolously. And she should be warning herself.
Point of order.
And removing herself.
Point of order. Please pause the time. Please pause the time. What's your point?
According to council rules, she's not being germane. We should be speaking exclusively.
Correct. She is not being germane. Can you state that rule?
Uh, point of order was the chair being germane. So you need to first call her out of order.
So, Ms. Councilwoman Burns, that is an out of order point? Councilwoman in the second ward, please state the rule.
Um, I don't have my rule in front of me, but it's the rule that speaks about being germane.
So I do have it. So it states, no, in Robert's rules, no, the chair cannot take.
So you do not have the floor? You did not ask for the floor? No, we paused your time because there have been, that's your first warning. I'm not arguing with you.
Y'all gonna run with this one?
I'm not arguing with you.
I mean, you gonna do what you want to do.
As I was stating.
And I appeal the ruling of the chair.
That's fine. Let's start her one minute.
Hold on, she needs support. For the order, she needs support.
But see, you don't know the rules.
This is her.
Proving my point.
Okay, do you have support? Support it for her. Go ahead. Support it for her.
Yeah.
Support it for her.
I don't care.
Support it for her.
Support.
Thank you. So it's been moved and properly supported. Give her her one minute. Let's go. Get, please put her one minute on the clock.
And I'm sorry that you have to do this. So it states in Robert's rules that the chair cannot take the floor from a speaker in the middle of their speech underneath Robert's rules, as members cannot be interrupted when they have the floor, except in limited circumstances like a point of order. You didn't have one to prove a fact. But I did not know, number one, or you didn't know who I met with. And I had not disclosed that to Dr. Flynn until now. And so when we talk about knowing the rules, you again prove you didn't know the rule because you needed to have it seconded when I said I appeal the ruling of the chair. You didn't know it. Now, you're wasting time. I could have been done, but it's so important for you because you are in a, you are actually abusing, again, your position and your power. My dialogue is with him. You wanted to make a frivolous point. You can't read Robert's rules 12th edition. And it'll tell you. It'll tell you. Now, you can take the last of the minutes like you've been taking the floor.
Thank you. All right. So Ms. Burns was warned. Go ahead. Start my one minute. Ms. Burns was warned, one, because she continued to be rude to the chair. Two, she continued to use frivolous points of order. Three, she continued to speak when she did not have the floor. She just spent a whole minute talking about everything but what her point was. Roll call, Madam Clerk. This is the roll call vote, uh, as to whether or not Ms. Burns, um, will receive a warning. A no will overturn the ruling of the chair. A yes will support the ruling of the chair. No, excuse me. A yes will overturn the ruling of the chair. A no will support the ruling of the chair. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Alamein?
No.
Dr. Lewis?
No.
Ms. Johnson?
No.
Ms. Priestley?
No.
Ms. Winfrey Carter is not in? Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Michelle?
No.
Mr. Pfeiffer is not in? Mr. Jared is not in? The vote is one yes, five no?
The vote is one yes, five no. That ruling stands. Ms. Burns has her first warning. Would you please go back to 204 on the clock and give Ms. Burns the rest of her time?
Okay, so Dr. Flynn, um, did you, you and I have not had, because it wasn't in the packet that if you struggle because she's wrong, that you'll get 500,000. That's not in our packet. It's simply not in there. And so to make the point, which is why I get to say it on, because it's my time, that wasn't in the packet. And so that was my concern when I met with him, that you would get the 1.5, which was great. But I know that there were, if there were issues, I know they were going to support the market because they say that the market is important. And so as I think the community, it has faced challenges in this community. Because I couldn't get out the park where you're getting the 1.5 million, which is great. And that there was money going to be added to help you alone because it's a new business. And there are going to be unforeseen things, just like not having the, uh, security. You didn't know that with COVID when it started, that, uh, supplies and also labor tripled. Those were things that were not seen. So the packet is irrelevant because it didn't have the information updated in it 10 months ago or a year ago, which makes it irrelevant. You can have the last of these seconds, sir.
Well, uh, Councilwoman, as you mentioned, that the grocery store is important for this community. I've heard you say that on several occasions in public forums, that we are in a food desert. And what we've attempted to do in the past 10 years is to come out of that food desert. I think it's important to emphasize that it takes, on average, eight to 10 years for co-ops to open in suburban areas. Eight to 10 years. We are right at the 10-year period.
How long did it take for the Detroit one? Was it 12 years?
It was 14, I believe.
Okay.
14 years for the Detroit People's Co-op to open. And, uh, they're doing well. And we have the same supplier. We have the same, uh, retail strategic leadership team that's been deployed to Flint.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the first round of discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman in the second ward.
Sure, thank you. Dr. Flynn, continue my time.
Thank you. So, um, the appeal, Councilman Burns, is for you to support the project because you and I, in being transparent, have talked, uh, on several occasions. And I appreciate the fact that you took the time to take my call. It's greatly appreciated. Um, I, I'm not going to address, uh, the lies that you have heard by Mr. Woodson. Not going to address that at all. What I will address.
Mr. Woodson, do not talk to the people at the podium. Mr. Woodson, do not speak to the people at the podium. Don't speak to the people at the lectern. No, Mr. Woodson. Go ahead. Mr. Woodson, that's your first warning. Go ahead with your time.
What I will address is what, uh, this effort, uh, has sought to do in the city of Flint. And this effort has brought close to 1,000 people who've invested their own money. I'm talking about, uh, low-income folk, regular folk, folk in the faith community, folks across, uh, uh, faith denominationally, cross-races. That's a powerful movement, um, that we are, uh, that's on display right now, uh, in our city. And I think that's something that we should not ignore. Secondly, I think the creation of jobs is extremely important. You all know this as well as I do, more than I do. And so we're contributing to the tax base by creating, uh, close to 40 employment opportunities. And then I think what's most important, uh, is also the fact that this is community-owned. We can say truly that we own this grocery store cooperative. So Hamidys, Krogers, Myers, they can make corporate decisions to close. But in this community-owned, um, we come together and we decide, even if the gross profit margins aren't where they should be, we can decide that the store remains open. And if more people would join and more people, um, patronize the store, the more likely of a success. And so, yes, most businesses, Councilman Burns, do struggle in the first three to five years. This will, in all likelihood, uh, see the same kind of scenario. But if it has support from council, if it has support from members of the community, and yes, we've heard the opposition, but this is not unusual. And when co-ops are starting across the country in different communities, it's not unusual for there to be opposition. But I just want to remind you all of something that I think is really important. And that is, um, the mission is important, but the movement is even more important. A movement of unity and togetherness of people. And so.
Point of order. Please pause the time.
Gladys Williamson, she needs to be brought to order. She's yelling out, and she yelled out "grift." Right. She needs to be warned, ma'am.
Ms. Williamson, stop yelling out. All right. So that's your first warning. See how you walked yourself into it? I wasn't even going to give it to you. Go ahead.
May I continue?
Continue.
Uh, so, um, I'm, I'm hoping that, uh, seated leadership, uh, along with the city of Flint residents, will join the movement as we seek to make history, uh, in this city of Flint. And then I, I want to point out that when we talk about this $300,000, uh, pre-opening dollars, um, it, it's not sustainability dollars. Um, these are pre-opening dollars. And of course, before you hire, um, you, you've got to have retirement plans and insurance and all of these kinds of things, benefits, that make it attractive to be employed there. And this is what we're asking the city to help us, um, with, with the, the dollars to be utilized for.
All right. So, um, again, thank you. And, um, is there anything else that you would like to add on my time? Anything else that you would like to add?
Um, I, I would like to, to just simply ask for the council's support on this resolution.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
And there is a, a additional point that I want to make. That, um, that there's conversations like, uh, you know, when's it going to open? When's it going to open? Those are legitimate questions, legitimate questions. And I think it's important for people to know, uh, that if I could have had this, if I had the power, the influence, the authority, the funding, the financing, uh, this store would have been open 10 years ago. Um, but there were things, as Councilman Burns mentions, that, um, that we did not anticipate. That's not unusual, um, with a project. A multi-mean, that's not unusual. But the good news, the good news is that we didn't give up. We didn't quit. We remained resilient in spite of opposition, in spite of the innuendo, in spite of the many challenges and obstacles. We remain resilient. And I think that's the spirit of Flint, isn't it? That's the spirit of Flint, Stones. So, um, we are proud to announce that the store will open in November.
Thank you. Is there anybody else, um, in the first round of discussion? Council, uh, councilman in the first ward.
Thank you, Dr. Flynn, for being here today.
Yes, sir.
I'm definitely in support of the grocery store, which is community-driven. Um, and it's also on my ward. You mentioned some, um, key things about the, the initiative. And that is, um, one, we're living in a food desert in that area. This is also going to be creating jobs, going to be providing fresh foods and things like that. I have a lot of seniors in the ward who can definitely benefit from that. And then we have a lot of young people looking for opportunities. And this 40 jobs, that's a lot of jobs that be, um, be given to local individuals. So you definitely have my full support. And, um, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in the first round of discussion? All right. Seeing as how there's nobody else in the first round of discussion, I will go ahead and, um, take my time. So, again, this will create 40 jobs in our city. Um, it goes without saying, but I'll say it again, that we are currently in a time where, uh, we have more unemployed people than we have actual employment across our nation. And so these are, this, these are 40 people who will have an opportunity to have employment at a time where there aren't even enough jobs to cover the amount of people that are unemployed. It's a 975-member-owned, um, store, meaning 975 people in this community. 975 people in this community thought enough of the fact that, like, uh, the councilman in the first ward said, that there is a food desert over there and that something had to be done. They're taking the first step. They're taking the first actions to, um, provide themselves with an opportunity to be able to grocery shop in their city, close to their neighborhoods. Second thing, 31 Flint churches have also decided to invest in this community-owned store at this point. 31 churches. And we all know that when times are hard and resources are hard for residents, residents are part of a congregation, which means there's hard times for churches. So you have 31 churches willing to invest as well during such difficult times. This will be the first and only community-owned grocery store in Flint and Genesee County. Every time somebody gets up here, or most of the time, people get up here and they want to talk about Flint. They want to talk about the rich history of Flint, the things that we do, the things that we've been on the cutting edge about, the things that we need to get right. So this is something we have an opportunity to be on the cutting edge to do, to be the first in Flint and in Genesee County. That's once again Flint making history for the right reasons. That's Flint making history for a positive reason. Then you want to talk about, um, the 300,000 and if and when it should be given. One of the things that we tend to do is be reactive. The last thing you want to do is be reactive when you have 975 people who have invested, 31 churches who have invested, 40 jobs that will be dependent upon this store opening. The last thing you want to do is be, is be reactive and say, we'll give you the money if you start to go down. When everyone knows statistically, the first three years are the hardest times for a business that's up and coming. And so what you don't want to do is allow a business that you have an opportunity to set on a stable foundation upfront by giving them $300,000, is wait until the back end. Because lots of times, by the time they need help, they need more than that $300,000 in help. Again, it's been 10 years. 10 years. We're all clear that it's been 10 years. That should teach, that should talk to us about the testament of what you're doing, what you're trying to build, all those who believe in it. Because I don't know too many people who can stand in a line for 10 minutes, let alone stand in line for 10 years and wait for the proper funding. So let's be clear that when we say the number 10, all we're talking about is the resilience, the courage, and the fortitude to stay and wait and see this whole thing through. So you have my support. The 975 members, which two of our colleagues have to, happen to be, have my support. The 31 churches have my support. The 40-plus families, because even though it's only going to, um, have 40 people that will be employed, that is 40 families. That's 40 people who won't have to borrow money from another member of their family That's 40 people who won't have to borrow money from another member of their family who might not have to go into a hole to get that money. So again, that's 40-plus people who will be sustained because of this. So they have my support. The countless residents that live on the north end that have felt like they have been disinvested in, which is true if you look at that north end, they have my support in the fact that, yes, you can go in your city, on your side of town, down the street from your home, and you can grocery shop. But not only that, the dollars that are going to circulate through our city have my support. Thank you. Is anybody else who would like to floor in the second round of discussion?
Yes. Dr. Flynn, because my reason is my own personal ones, and not any personal, because it's really what my ward is. And it's not being reactive. The 1.5 million, million is proactive. And it's clear, it's given pre, which means before the store is open. You have not run into that part yet. And so, I think at this time, and I've listened, and I'm not saying that I cannot support it at this time without some other information. And it's not in our packet. It's not. The 1.5 million is not in our packet. The additional funds is not in our packet. As far as like what the goals, and I've read the articles about the number of people, are they Flint people being hired that are coming, are they Flint residents? Yeah. Are they Flint residents that will be hired?
I can tell you that we have an established quota that we want to hit, and we anticipate hitting those numbers. There is, just as we did with the construction, we hired local minority subcontractors. We intend to do the same thing with employees. So, yes, to that question.
Is it 100% or does the percentage of?
We're looking at 80 to 90% of residents, City of Flint. I do. Can I address one of the issues you raised about? The 1.5 million in additional, the additional sources that.
Can you please pause the time? Please pause the time. Ms. Williamson, you went from here to back there to over there. And in every single spot, we hear you clearly. Can you please stop? We're trying to listen. You've gone to three different spots. Okay, that's your second warning, you're removed. You are removed from this meeting.
And point of order, Madam Chair. I see that the second round, we need to give three minutes, and that clock's at 3:15, so.
Oh, yeah, that, I'm not sure what happened there. All right, continue the time, please.
Thank you. And so, let me introduce, let me introduce my spouse, Dolores. She's also the Chief Financial Officer and Project Management Assistant for the grocery store. And she just brought to my remembrance something that I want her to articulate it to you.
Ms. Burns, I just wanted to, I was trying to remind him to let you know that our food service vendor is requiring a certain amount of money that we have in the bank for pre-opening. And that number is 1.5 million. So as we discuss what we have received from Mott, those aren't pre-opening dollars.
And the time is going, do you have any of that on paper?
No. I just, I just got your question, but I can't get it to you.
And Dr. Flynn, I will call you tomorrow. I don't see your votes up here today, and I'm being honest with you. And this doesn't mean that you cannot bring it back. But if I could have that information, because I like to read and know that when I'm voting, I don't have that, that's not in our packet. And that's why I was asking those questions.
Okay. So is there any other information that you need? Do you want me, do you want to text it to me? Do you want me to call you?
Thank you. Anybody else in the second round of discussion?
All right, thank you. So through you, Madam Chair, to Councilwoman Burns, could you please let him know what else he needs?
Councilwoman Burns, you do have the opportunity. She's offering you her time to let you know, for you to let him know. So you do have an opportunity to take advantage of it if you would like.
I think Dr. Flynn was clear with communication before I ended that he knows I will.
All right, thank you. Go ahead with your time.
That I will contact.
All right, thank you. Dr. Flynn, thank you so much for coming back before this body. This body that said that they care about residents. This body that admitted that we do have a food desert here in this city. This body that said if you secure the 1.5 million dollars, that we'll come back and give you the $300,000. I'm sorry that you had to come back before this body so we can play in your face, because you are doing something very historic. Like the Councilwoman of the seventh ward said, we're known for historic things in the City of Flint. And one of the historic things that you're bringing here is our first food co-op that over 1,000 people invested in, including me. I thought so much about the food co-op, I had to weigh, I had to weigh my options. My $250 investment? Or can I rescind that and do something better for the greater good? I trust that you can use the $300,000 instead of that petty $250. And so, with that being said, you're also bringing 40 jobs to the city? This is nothing but a win. So I apologize that we have people clapping to go against something that could benefit the community. I apologize that we have, it's fine, listen, okay, yep. I am happy that you decided to choose Flint for this initiative. So keeping in mind that you all have theft, you know, of your building supplies and other things, hence opening up during COVID, and you're still thriving, you're still opening up before the anticipated co-op opening, because you all just said how long it would take for co-ops to get going. In spite of COVID, you all were still able to do something. So that speaks volumes. We said we want food, some fresh food in our neighborhood. We said we want something on the north side, it's an opportunity to have it. But what I won't sit here and do, I'm not going to sit up here and allow folks to play in your face and act like they are so down and they need so many documents. We had over two years for them to get any document they need from you. And so, this is just where we are. And it gets, it gets me a little angry when we're trying to do what's in the best interest of the people. We're giving the people what they want. Judy said, her ward said that they don't want it, fine. But guess who wards do want it? Wards 1, 2, 3, 7, and 6, and the rest of them? This is something new to the city. So thank you, and hopefully we'll be able to give your money, people stop playing with your time.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in the second round of discussion? Seeing as how there's no one else in the second round of discussion, take a few moments. You have my support. The bulk of Flint supports this. You have 975 members that support this, 31 churches. You have the 40-plus families that will be affected by this, that will be positively impacted, let me use the correct words, by what you're doing. You have all of the families on the north end. You have families on the south end who are still going to come and shop at the grocery store. I will be at the grocery store shopping. I know that it will open in November. Hopefully you will still have us in November. And hopefully, we won't have to, in a few months from now, try to figure out how to give you 300-plus thousand dollars, because, you know, this is something good for the residents of Flint. This was helping to, one, reinvest in the north end, which you have been doing the entire time you've been back in the City of Flint, is reinvesting on the north end. So thank you to you, thank you to Lady Flynn. Again, that's 10 years of dedication, 10 years of encouragement, 10 years of showing that you can start a plan and stick to it. That's 10 years that culminated in showing the community that, yes, they can open a grocery store. That's 10 years culminating, showing the community that if you just stick to it long enough, you can find funding sources. So that's 10 years of proving to the City of Flint, your dedication to Flint. That's 10 years of proving to residents that you will keep your word. That's 10 years worth of investment that you should be very proud of. I thank you for the work that you both have done in this community. See you in November. Roll call, Madam Clerk. This is the roll call vote for Resolution 250290-T, which is the reallocation of ARPA funds for the North Flint Food Market Cooperative.
Dr. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson? Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Priestley?
No.
Ms.? Ms. Winfrey Carter is not in. Ms. Burns?
No.
Ms. Michelle?
Yes.
Mr. Pfeiffer is not in. Mr. Jared is not in. Mr. Alamein?
Yes.
The vote is for yes to no?
The vote is for yes to no. The reallocation of ARPA funds, North Flint Food Market Cooperative, Resolution 250290-T fails. Moving on to Resolution 250293-T, reallocation of ARPA funds, Flint Institute of Music. What is the pleasure of the body?
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman in the second ward.
Go ahead and pass that resolution.
There is a motion to pass, to approve the resolution. Is there support? Is moved and properly supported by the councilman in the first ward.
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman in the second ward.
Call the question.
What'd you say?
Oh, I said, call for the question.
Oh, there's been a call for the question, is there support? Moved and properly supported by the councilman in the first ward. Roll call, roll call to call for the question, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Is her mic not working?
Ms. Priestley?
Yes.
Ms. Winfrey Carter is absent. Ms. Burns?
No.
Ms. Michelle?
Yes.
Mr. Pfeiffer is absent. Mr. Jared is absent. Mr. Alamein?
Yes.
Dr. Lewis?
Yes.
The vote is five yes, one no?
The vote is five yes, one no. That call for the question passes. We will now vote on Resolution 250293-T, reallocation of ARPA funds for Flint Institute of Music. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Priestley?
Yes.
Ms. Winfrey Carter is absent. Ms. Burns?
No.
Ms. Michelle?
Yes.
Mr. Pfeiffer is absent. Mr. Jared is absent. Mr. Alamein?
Yes.
Dr. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
The vote is five yes, one no?
The vote is five yes, one no. Resolution 250293-T, reallocation of ARPA funds to Flint Institute of Music has passed. Moving on to Resolution 250294-T, approving settlement Barton v. Neely. What is the pleasure of the body?
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman in the fourth ward.
Move to approve.
There's been a motion to approve, is there support? Moved and properly supported. Councilwoman in the sixth ward, you have the floor.
Thank you. So this is the settlement with the fire. I will not be supporting this this evening. I'm not in agreement with the settlement for other reasons. And I just want to make sure that that is on the record. This settlement, there were things that, according to the mayor, the court said the mayor was not entitled to qualified immunity. And this case should be paid from him and not by the city. The court deemed that he interfered or he had input, and he was not entitled to qualified immunity. And this is not, in my opinion, for me, the burden of the City of Flint. Whether the settlement agreement is or not, but the settlement, the $225,000 agreed upon, this amount should be paid by him, as the court deemed he's not entitled to qualified immunity, which would state in his position of mayor, he is protected. So I yield the floor.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like the floor in the first round of discussion? Is there anyone else who would like the floor in the first round of discussion? Is there anyone who would like the floor in the second round of discussion? Is there anyone who would like the floor in the second round of discussion? Seeing as how there's no one else who would like the floor, it is now time for the roll call vote for Resolution 250294-T, approving settlement Barton versus Neely. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Winfrey Carter is absent. Ms. Burns?
No.
Ms. Michelle?
Yes.
Mr. Pfeiffer is absent. Mr. Jared is absent. Mr. Alamein?
Yes.
Dr. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Priestley?
Yes.
The vote is five yes, one no?
The vote is five yes, one no. Resolution 250294-T, which is the approving settlement Barton v. Neely, has been approved. Moving on to Resolution 250295-T, which is the Hubble, Roth, and Clark phase design for, to provide preliminary and conceptual design for the Flint Police and Fire Department's Training Complex in an amount not to exceed $189,835.50. What is the pleasure of the body?
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman in the second ward.
I move that we approve this resolution.
There is a motion for this resolution to be approved, is there support?
Madam Chair.
Moved and properly supported by the councilman in the first ward. Councilwoman in the second ward, you have the floor.
All right, call for the question.
There's been a motion to call for the question, is there support? Moved and properly supported by the councilman in the first ward. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Michelle?
Yes.
Mr. Alamein?
Yes.
Dr. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Priestley?
Yes.
The vote is six yes, zero no?
The vote is six yes, zero no. Resolution 250295-T has been approved. I'm sorry, was that, that was for the call for the question? Oh, okay, well then, roll call vote for 250295-T.
Ms. Michelle?
Yes.
Excuse me, Mr. Alamein?
Yes.
Dr. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Priestley?
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
The vote is six yes, zero no?
The vote is six yes, zero no. Resolution 250295-T has been approved. Moving on to Resolution 250278-T, which is the settlement for the 2025 National Opioid Settlement with Purdue and certain of its affiliates and the Sackler family. What is the pleasure of the body?
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman in the sixth ward.
Do we, with these, I'm looking at these, we didn't have six to go into executive session. So through you to the attorney, do we need to go into executive session? Because we've got two of these which are on here.
So, one second. City Attorney.
I don't think he heard.
No, 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 I read off the resolution. And so I'm waiting for a motion on it. That's what has to happen after I read off the resolution. So I thought you had a motion.
Yeah, no, I know that we did not go into executive session.
Madam Chair.
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman in the second ward.
So I'll like to move to approve resolution.
There's been a motion to approve Resolution 250278-T. Is there support?
Madam Chair.
Is there support?
Oh, yeah, he's there, support.
I didn't hear him. Moved improperly supported by the councilman in the first ward. Who wants the floor?
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman in the fourth ward.
I just want to make it clear that we do not have to go into executive session to discuss this. However, there is a deadline for us to accept this, or we lose out. And that deadline is September 30th, which is why I'm going to support it.
2.1 billion, correct?
I don't.
It is 2.1, something, yeah. Councilwoman in the second ward.
No, I have nothing.
So anybody else in the first round? Anybody in the second round? Seeing as how there's no one in the second round, this is the roll call vote to approve 250278-T. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Alamein? Dr. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Priestley?
Yes.
Ms. Burns is not in. Ms. Michelle?
Yes.
The vote is five yes, zero no?
The vote is five yes, zero no. Resolution 250278-T, which is the settlement for the 2025 National Opioid Settlements with Purdue and certain of its affiliates and the Sackler family, has been approved. Moving on to Resolution 250279-T, which is the settlement for the 2025 Updated Michigan State Subdivision Agreement, Allocation of Opioid Settlement Agreements, Generic Manufacturing National Opioid Claims. What is the pleasure of the body?
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman in the second ward.
Motion to approve.
There's been a motion to approve, is there support? Moved and properly supported?
All right, Madam Chair, call for the question.
There's been a call for the question, is there support? Moved and properly supported? It's a roll call vote to call for the question.
Dr. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Priestley?
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Michelle?
Yes.
Mr. Alamein? The vote is six yes, zero no?
The vote is six yes, zero no. We will now vote on Resolution 250279-T, which is the settlement, 2025 Updated Michigan State Subdivision Agreement, Allocation of Opioid Settlement Agreements, Generic Manufacturing National Opioid Claims. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Johnson?
Is her mic on?
Ms. Priestley?
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Michelle?
Yes.
Mr. Alamein? Dr. Lewis?
Yes.
The vote is six yes, zero no?
The vote is six yes, zero no. That resolution is approved. Moving on to Resolution 250296-T, which is the prevailing wage standard city-funded construction projects. What is the pleasure of the body?
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman in the second ward.
I move to approve this resolution.
There's been a motion to approve, is there support? Moved and properly supported by the councilman in the first ward. Councilwoman in the second ward.
All right, call for the question.
There's been a call for the question, is there support? Councilman in the first ward, roll call, Madam Clerk for the question.
Ms. Priestley?
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
No.
Ms. Michelle?
Yes.
Mr. Alamein?
Yes.
Dr. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
The vote is five yes, one no?
The vote is five yes, one no. We will now vote on Resolution 250296-T, which is the prevailing wage standard city-funded construction projects. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Burns?
No.
Ms. Michelle?
Yes.
Mr. Alamein? Dr. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Priestley?
Yes.
The vote is five yes, one no?
The vote is five yes, one no, for the prevailing wage standard city-funded construction projects. Resolution 250296-T. Moving on to 250277-T, which is the collective bargaining agreement, city of Flint Police Officers Labor Council, Flint Police Department Sergeants. What is the pleasure of the body?
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman in the second ward.
Make a motion to approve this resolution.
There's been a motion to approve and properly supported by the councilman, Councilwoman in the second ward, you have the floor.
Thank you. Call for the question.
There's been a call for the question. Is there support? Moved and properly supported by the councilman in the first ward. Roll call to call for the question, Madam Clerk.
Just one moment. Ms. Michelle?
Yes.
Mr. Alamein? Dr. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Priestley?
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
The vote is six yes, zero no?
The vote is six yes, zero no. Are you ready? All right, so this is the roll call vote for 250227-T, collective bargaining agreement, city of Flint Police Officers Labor Council, Flint Police Department Sergeants.
Mr. Alamein?
Yes.
Dr. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Priestley?
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Michelle?
Yes.
The vote is six yes, zero no?
The vote is six yes, zero no, for the collective bargaining agreement, city of Flint Police Officers Labor Council, Flint Police Department Sergeants, which is Resolution 250277-T. Moving on to Resolution 250223-T, which is the grant acceptance for Financial Recovery Technical Assistance, CSMI Foundation. What is the pleasure of the body?
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman in the second ward.
Make a motion to approve.
There's been a motion to approve. Is there support? Moved and properly supported by the councilman in the first ward. Councilwoman in the second ward, you have the floor.
Want to, want to call the question.
There's been a mo, motion to call for the question. Is there support? Moved and properly supported by the councilman in the first ward. Um, Madam Clerk, this is the call for the question for Resolution 250223-T.
Dr. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Priestley?
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
No.
Ms. Michelle?
Yes.
Mr. Alamein? The vote is five yes, one no?
The vote is five yes, zero no. I'm sorry, five yes, one no. Thank you, I corrected that. Five yes, one no, but we will call for the question, and that's, this is the, um, roll call vote for Resolution 250223-T, which is the grant acceptance for Financial Recovery Techno, Technical Assistance, CSMI Foundation.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Priestley?
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
No.
Ms. Michelle?
Yes.
Mr. Alamein?
Yes.
Dr. Lewis?
Yes.
The vote is five yes, one no?
The vote is five yes, one no. Resolution 250223-T, grant acceptance for Financial Recovery Technical Assistance, CSMI Foundation has passed. Moving on, excuse me, it has been approved. Moving on to Resolution 250198-T, which is the contract for Fleece and Vanderbrink Water Assessment Management, Water Reliability Plan, Department of Public Works, Water Division. What is the pleasure of the body?
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman in the second ward.
Make a motion to approve this resolution.
There's been a motion to approve. Is there support? Moved and properly supported by the councilman in the first ward. Councilwoman in the second ward, you have the floor.
So, um, I would like to take this time to call a question.
All right, there's been a call for the question. Is there support? Moved and properly supported by the councilman in the first ward. This is, uh, the call for the question vote. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Priestley?
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
No.
Ms. Michelle?
Yes.
Mr. Alamein? Dr. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
The vote is five yes, one no?
The vote is five yes, one no. We will now call for the roll call vote for Resolution 250198-T. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Burns?
No.
Ms. Michelle?
Yes.
Mr. Alamein?
Yes.
Dr. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Priestley?
Yes.
The vote is five yes, one no?
The vote is five yes, one no. Resolution 250198-T has been approved, which is the contract for Fleece and Vanderbrink Water Assessment Management, Water Reliability Plan, Department of Public Works, Water Division. Moving on to Resolution 250182-T, which is the grant acceptance continuing professional education, State of Michigan Commission Law Enforcement Standards. What is the pleasure of the body? Councilwoman in the second ward.
Um, I would like to put a motion to the floor to approve this resolution.
Spin a motion to approve this resolution. It's moved and properly supported. Councilwoman in the sixth ward.
Thank you. So I did happen to have a conversation with Chief Green in regards to this. Um, a very lengthy conversation, um, in regards to, um, the MCOS, the training, and how our officers deal with our public. Um, and including those in the council chambers where someone just sent me a picture of Gladys Williams' arms bruised up from how she was just handled. Uh, she's on her way to the hospital. Um, some of the things that we, we talked about, which was not just having module training, but in-person training, um, which was also needed. And so, um, I do keep my word. I had a, I appreciate him meeting with me, although I would like to have seen him here, but we didn't know we were having this meeting until, I didn't until late last night. And so, um, I will be supporting the module training grant funded. Um, but it is, um, there was very clear with him that they need in-person training. And for those who are in council chambers, the officers, they need even more training, such as Open Meetings Act, Roberts Rules. They need to be familiar with our council rules and then also the Flint City Charter. So, um, I will be supporting this grant for the module as, uh, I look forward to other conversations with him. I yield the floor.
Is there anybody else in the first round of discussion? Anybody else in the first round of discussion? Anybody in the second round of discussion? Seeing as how there is no one in the second round of discussion, um, we'll call, roll call vote, Madam Clerk, for Resolution 250182-T.
Ms. Michelle?
Yes.
Mr. Alamein? Dr. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Priestley?
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
The vote is six yes, zero no?
The vote is six yes, zero no, for grant acceptance continuing professional education for the State of Michigan Commission Law Enforcement Standards. Moving on to, we have, um, two appointments. What is the pleasure of the body?
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman in the second ward.
Um, I would like to make a motion to approve appointments 250297 and appointment 250298.
There's been a motion to approve Resolutions 250297-T and 250298-T. Is there support?
Support.
Um, I'll take the fourth ward's support. Uh, moved and properly, moved by the one, Councilwoman in the second ward, properly supported by the Councilwoman in the fourth ward. Um, I guess we'll have discussion. Was, roll call, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Alamein? Dr. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Priestley?
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
No. I don't know if they're wrapping together.
Ms. Michelle?
Yes.
The vote is five yes, one no?
The vote is five yes, one no. Resolutions 250297-T and 250298-T have both been approved. What is the pleasure of the body?
Madam Chair.
There's a motion to adjourn. Is there support? Moved and properly supported. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Dr. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Priestley? Ms. Burns? Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Michelle?
Yes.
Mr. Alamein?